Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to call this meeting to order and everyone stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Blakely Borough officials, Mayor Jeanette Mariani, treat to see you, Council President Lou Perry, Vice President Jeff Cruciani, Councilman Mike Hens, Hens's, Councilman Joe Munley, Councilman Pat Zlanik, Councilman Kevin Swift, and Councilman Alco. Particularly the Borough Manager Chris Payon for giving us this opportunity to use your building. We try to go once a month every other meeting to a different location. The meeting has been called to order. I'll entertain a motion for a reading of the approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Okay, Norman, thank you. Proclamation two-two-zero-two-seven-one.
Proclamation two-two-zero-two-seven-one is proclaiming October thirteenth, 2022, as metastatic breast cancer Awareness Day. Whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, let it be known that Lackawanna County is pleased to recognize and observe October thirteenth, 2022, as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and hereby recognizes the hashtag Light Up MBC National Campaign. And whereas breast cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death among women in the United States, more than one in eight women and one in eight-hundred-and-thirty-three men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetimes. Metastatic breast cancer occurs when breast cancer spreads to other parts of the body, including the bones, lungs, liver, and brain, and regardless of early detection, approximately thirty percent of zero-to-three breast cancers will return as stage four. Over nineteen-hundred Pennsylvanians will die from breast cancer in 2022, with ninety-eight percent due to metastatic breast cancer. Whereas the hashtag Light Up MBC Campaign on October thirteenth each year illuminates landmarks throughout the world to bring awareness to this, to the disease, and to honor the daily number of lives lost to MBC. In partnership with Metavi- Metavi- Metaviver Research and support with funds critical to cancer research, the aim is to dramatically increase the percentage of breast cancer search dollars to reflect the current thirty percent rate of MBC among all breast cancer patients. Now, therefore, we, Jerry Notari, Annie, Debbie Dominic, and myself, Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim October thirteenth as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day in Lackawanna County. And just as a side note, too, we are going to light up our courthouse next week to promote the breast cancer awareness. So, and today we have John and Sue Klutcher here to speak on behalf. And John, all yours.
Good morning, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to come in and address everybody this morning. My name is John Klutcher. My wife's Sue. We're from South Abington Township. Sue was diagnosed with metastatic breast cancer in March of 2017. And at that time, that was despite, at age fifty-one, having never missed a mammogram, never having a regular viewed mammogram. A biopsy from certain rib and pelvic area regions revealed that, in fact, she had developed metastatic breast cancer. Gold Standard scans further revealed no detectable amount of breast cancer in her breast area. And that represents a very small percentage, probably under ten percent, of people that get breast cancer on first diagnosis. The good news is, at that time, between being bewildered and angered at such a diagnosis, the survival rate was a grim twenty-six months at that time. And I'm happy to say, five-and-a-half years later, her scans are still stable, and we treat every day as a gift. I want to thank the county commissioners, Chris Schirmack, Debbie Dominic, Jerry Notari Annie for supporting this. A special shout-out for all her help to Deputy Chief of Staff Tracy Hart and Brian Jeffers for making this happen. Rick Notari for helping get that proclamation down to something that could be read in less than a half hour, because it was even a little wordier even before that fact. And Director of Maintenance Mark Dower, who is going to make sure that the county courthouse looks beautifully illuminated next week. To defeat MBC, we must do better, and you have done that. You've taken that step, and you've made the awareness, and that is a big accomplishment, and it's what we're trying to achieve through advocacy. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Some of the statistics, it really affects women, one in eight, less so for men. And early stage is highly treatable. There's a lot of success in stage one through three. And coming out of the pandemic, I'll say that there are challenges with screenings, and that's a particular concern for oncologists and doctors and healthcare managers. Metastatic breast cancer, as we said, develops when breast cancer cells spread to other parts of the body, and there's a lot of misperceptions about that because there is no cure. It has a different timetable, and the treatments, although they have extended the quality of life, ultimately, it is a fatal disease. I would say that I would stress the ninety-eight percent of the breast cancer deaths you hear about are metastatic breast cancer. It's not always described in the proper terms. And thirty percent of early-stage cancer does go on months, years, or even decades later to develop into MBC. The Light Up MBC Campaign that we mentioned, at its roots back in 2013, when a skilled care nurse named Jessica Moore was diagnosed with MBC at the age of thirty-two. One of her best friends and her noticed a landmark that was lit up for a cause, and Jessica commented how wonderful it would be to bring awareness to metastatic breast cancer. Jess passed away four years later at age thirty-six, but her family and commitment of Strong Friend Network developed More Fight, More Strong, who then teamed up a few years ago with Metaviver, who has their own version of a ribbon, and that incorporates teal, green, and pink. There's some info sheets that I'll leave out in the lobby that explain. That's your homework to read about the, what all the colors mean, and it's quite moving. This year, over two-hundred landmarks in all fifty states will be illuminated around the country and parts of the world in the fourth year of the campaign. And I will say Vermont and North Dakota were particularly difficult to get, but they accomplished every state. The mission of Light Up MBC is very simple: increase metastatic breast care awareness and raise desperately-needing funding dollars. Currently, less than five percent of all funds raised from all awareness campaigns goes to MBC research. And as we said earlier, thirty percent go on to develop MBC. There's a disproportionate ratio there. Light Up MBC and Metaviver are unique in that they donate one-hundred percent of all funds raised to peer-reviewed MBC research. Those grants are on their website, and I could give anybody a link for that information. There's full transparency, and again, it's, every dollar donated goes for MBC research. I'd like to close by saying, if we can figure out why breast cancer metastasizes and how to stop it, every single breast cancer patient benefits, regardless of their stage and regardless of the ribbon that they choose to symbolize their disease. New treatments always find a way around the drug therapy. And what we want to accomplish is to transition metastatic breast cancer into a more chronic, manageable disease that will increase the quality and length of life, because at the end of the day, we're not talking about statistics, we're talking about individuals, and every individual has their own story to tell. In Sue's case, she did not have any ability to fight cancer in her breast; it had advanced directly to metastatic. I know she maybe has a couple brief comments that she liked to make. Today is not a good day. She's feeling about as good as the weather out there.
Yeah.
But I'm glad that she could make it here.
I know. I think you covered pretty much most of what was going to be said. I just want to thank my husband for initiating this. Thank the commissioners and all of the staff for getting this to happen. It's very important, like I said, to get awareness out there. I thought I knew everything about breast cancer before I was diagnosed, and you don't. You don't until you actually find out a lot more. So, thank you all.
Do you want to do?
No, we'll go down there.
I just want to say something positive. So, I'm a twenty-three-year breast cancer survivor.
Are you? Good.
Yeah, so just keep your chin up.
Oh, I will. I do, I do, yeah. Everything, I look forward to a milestone. Everything's a milestone.
And God bless.
Thank you.
Let's take one step over this way. One, two, three. Smile. Take a couple. Take one with a flash.
Hard to smile when you're thinking about those.
One more there. There we go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good day in Dallas.
Thank you. We'll check with the board. Did you? Was that a little tough on you? Take a break. No. Okay. Thank you. That's a very moving story.
Make a motion to vote.
Pardon me? No. No. Ordinance, second reading, two-two-zero-two-seven-zero.
This is ordinance two-seven-nine, the second reading, of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, requiring Lackawanna County's tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes beginning in the year, tax year 2023, under certain circumstances when notice was not received pursuant to Pennsylvania Act Fifty-seven of 2022. Whereas, on July eleventh, 2022, the Governor of Pennsylvania approved Act Fifty-seven of 2022, which amended the local tax collection law to add Section Seven, titled Effective Failure, A Failure to Receive Tax Notice. And whereas Act Fifty-seven of 2022, in part, requires each taxing district to pass legislation requiring a tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes under certain circumstances when notice was not received, and whereas such legislation must be enacted within ninety days of the enactment of Act Fifty-seven of 2022, and whereas Lackawanna County wishes to follow the state law by timely enacting such legislation. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the tax collector of Lackawanna County is hereby required to waive additional charges for real estate taxes as follows. Section one, notwithstanding any other provision of law pursuant to Section Seven B one of the local tax collection law, the tax collector of the County of Lackawanna is required to waive additional charges for real estate taxes beginning in the year 2023 if the taxpayer does all of the following. A, provides a waiver request of additional charges to the tax collector in possession of the claim within twelve months of a qualifying event. B, attest that a notice was not received. C, provides the tax collector in possession of the claim with one of the following: a copy of the deed showing the date of real property transfer, or a copy of the title requiring the acquisition of a mobile or manufactured home subject to taxation as real estate, showing the date of issuance, or a copy of the executed lease agreement between the owner of the mobile or manufactured home and the owner of the parcel of land on which the mobile or manufactured home will be situated, showing the date of lease commences, and pays the face value of the tax notice for the real estate tax with the waiver request. Section two, pursuant to Section Seven B two of the local tax collection law, the tax collector for the county shall use the form developed by the Pennsylvania Department of Economic Development, economic, community and economic development, and made available to Lackawanna County by which the taxpayer must request a waiver of additional charges in which form shall include a space for attestation by the taxpayer. Section three, pursuant to Section Seven B three of the local tax collection law, tax collector granted a waiver and paying real estate tax as provided in this law shall not be subject to any action at law or equity for additional charge or any claim existing or lien filed for additional charge shall be deemed satisfied. Section four, pursuant to Section Seven B four of the local tax collection law, the tax collector for the county shall not be personally liable for any amount due or arising from the real estate tax that is the subject in the waiver if the tax collector accepts a waiver and payment in good faith in accordance with Section Seven B of the local tax collection law. Section five, pursuant to Section Seven B five of the local tax collection law, as used in law, the following words and phrases shall have the meanings given to them in this law unless the context clearly indicates otherwise. The term "additional charge" shall mean any interest, fee, penalty, or charge accruing to in excess of the face amount of real estate tax as provided in the real estate tax notice. The term "qualifying event" shall mean: A, for purposes of real property, the date of transfer of ownership. B, for purposes of manufactured or mobile homes, the date of transfer or ownership. Or, the date of lease agreement commences for the original location or relocation of the mobile or manufactured home on a parcel of land not owned by the owner of the mobile or manufactured home. The term does not include the renewal of a lease for the same location. The term "tax collector" shall mean a tax collector as defined in Section Two of the local tax collection law, delinquent tax collector, as provided in Section Twenty-six-point-one of the local tax collection law, the tax claim bureau, or an alternate collector of taxes as provided in the Act of July seventh, nineteen forty-seven, known as the Real Estate Tax Sale Law, an employee, agent, or assignee authorized to collect the tax, a purchaser of the, of claim for the tax, or any other person authorized by law or contract to secure collection of, or take any action at law or an equity against the person or property of the taxpayer for the real estate tax or amounts liens or claims derived from the real estate tax. Section six, if any section clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance shall be held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decisions shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance so long as it remains legally enforceable minus the invalid portion. Lackawanna County reserves the right to amend this ordinance at any portion thereof from time to time, as it shall deem advisable in the best interest of the promotion of the purposes and intent of this ordinance and the effective administration thereof. Section seven, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon approval. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-two-eight-five.
Approving current payables, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve of the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, three-four-seven-four-zero-seven-dash-three-four-seven-six-eight-three, inclusive, totaling one-million-two-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Lackawanna County's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling ten-million-eight-hundred-eight-nine-thousand-six-hundred-eight-eight dollars and three cents. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October seventh, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Should we pay them this month?
Yeah, we might as well.
Okay.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Resolution two-two-zero-two-eight-two.
Authorizing the PCCD Local Law Enforcement Support Grant, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission on behalf of District Attorney's Office of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Crime and Delinquency for the Local Law Enforcement Support Grant Program, and Lackawanna County does hereby authorize Lackawanna County District Attorney Mark Powell Esquire to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant award, and the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Lackawanna County Local Law Enforcement Support Grant Application. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is District Attorney, Mr. Mark Powell.
Good morning, all. Mark Powell, Lackawanna County District Attorney. First, let me begin by thanking the county commissioners for the opportunity to manage the District Attorney's budget. We are very successful in that end, and just last week, we were notified that we received in two grants, a total of two million dollars. That's an additional two million dollars that we received for a total of four million dollars in the year twenty twenty-two. These resolutions that we're requesting here today are for additional reinforcements for law enforcement. Twenty-two-two-eight-two specifically is a state grant available to provide mostly software to enhance law enforcement's efforts on a wide variety of crimes. And we have filed an application, hopefully a successful application, in order to obtain those at, not at county expense, but through grant-funded money through the state, and therefore, I would respectfully ask for the approval to pursue that additional grant as outlined in twenty-two-dash-zero-two-eight-two.
Thank you. That seems to be one of the biggest concerns of people these days, is the crime issue, and I've got to give you credit, you've been doing a great job with it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-two-eight-three.
Authorizing the PCCD Gun Violence Investigation and Prosecution Grant, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission on behalf of District Attorney's Office of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Crime and Delinquency for the Gun Violence Investigation and Prosecution Grant Program, and Lackawanna County does hereby authorize Lackawanna County District Attorney Mark Powell Esquire to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant award, and the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Lackawanna County Local Law Enforcement Support Grant Application. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is District Attorney, Mr. Mark Powell.
Good morning, all. Mark Powell, Lackawanna County District Attorney. First, let me begin by thanking the county commissioners for the opportunity to manage the District Attorney's budget. We are very successful in that end, and just last week, we were notified that we received in two grants, a total of two million dollars. That's an additional two million dollars that we received for a total of four million dollars in the year twenty twenty-two. These resolutions that we're requesting here today are for additional reinforcements for law enforcement. Twenty-two-two-eight-two specifically is a state grant available to provide mostly software to enhance law enforcement's efforts on a wide variety of crimes. And we have filed an application, hopefully a successful application, in order to obtain those at, not at county expense, but through grant-funded money through the state, and therefore, I would respectfully ask for the approval to pursue that additional grant as outlined in twenty-two-dash-zero-two-eight-two.
Thank you. That seems to be one of the biggest concerns of people these days, is the crime issue, and I've got to give you credit, you've been doing a great job with it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Mr. Powell.
Thank you, everyone.
Resolution two-two-zero-two-two-zero-two-seven-two.
Authorizing the multimodal grant application for Clifton Township Plank Road Bridge, whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting revitalization within Lackawanna County, and Lackawanna County submitting a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant Program. And be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby request the multimodal transportation fund grant in the amount of one-million-nine-hundred-ninety-six-thousand dollars for the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to be used for the replacement of and related work for Bridge Number One, T-three-oh-four Plank Road, Clifton Township, Pennsylvania. And be it resolved, the Lackawanna County here stands and will commit a thirty percent matching share in the amount of five-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-eight-hundred dollars to complete this project. And be it further resolved, if the applicant does hereby designate Chairman Jerry Notari Annie as the official to execute all documents and agreements between Lackawanna County and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak about that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, commissioners and everyone. This resolution is authorizing the filing of a PennDOT Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant Application in the amount of one-point-nine million dollars to replace the Plank Road Temporary Bridge in Clifton Township with a permanent bridge structure.
Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution two-two-zero-two-seven-four.
Approving the extension agreement with EQUIS Workforce Solutions. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County acting as fiscal agent for and is approved by Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board does hereby approve an extension agreement for the provision of career and training services to youth clients to Arbor Employment and Training LLC, EQUIS Workforce Solutions. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution states that the county, on behalf of the Workforce Development Board, is entering into an extension agreement with EQUIS Workforce Solutions for Youth Services to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution two-two-zero-two-seven-five.
Entering into a TANF agreement, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County acting as fiscal agent on behalf of the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board does hereby enter into a Transitional Assistance for Needy Families Agreement with Arbor Employment and Training, EQUIS Workforce Solutions, in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars to provide payroll services for approximately seventy to eighty young adults enrolled in the Work Experience Program activities. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
This is another resolution that the county is entering in on behalf of the Workforce Development Board, and it is for EQUIS Workforce Solutions to provide payroll services for young adults enrolled in workforce experience programs.
Thank you. Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brenda. Two-two-zero-two-seven-six.
Approving the extension agreement for Earn. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County acting as a fiscal agent for the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board does hereby enter into an extension agreement with Educational Data Systems Incorporated for the provision of career counseling, supportive services, and training services to employment, advancement, and retention network clients. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
This is another Workforce Development Board agreement for an extension with EDSI to provide career and training services to our Earn clients.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two-two-zero-two-seven-eight.
Entering into an additional services agreement with Educational Data Systems, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County acting as the fiscal agent on behalf of the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board does hereby enter into a purchase of additional services agreement in the amount of thirty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars in Rapid Response Funding to Educational Data Systems Incorporated, to be used for individuals meeting eligibility, eligibility requirements for dislocated workers as defined by the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here's Director Sacco.
Again, this is another Workforce Development Board agreement with EDSI to provide additional services for dislocated workers.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And resolution two-two-zero-two-seven-nine.
Approving the extension agreement with adult and dislocated workers. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County acting as fiscal agent for and approved by the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board does hereby approve an extension agreement for the provision of career and training services for adult and dislocated workers, clients, to Educational Data Systems Incorporated in accordance with a previously awarded contract. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
This is the last Workforce Development Board agreement. This is for an extension agreement with EDSI to provide career and training services to adult and dislocated workers.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
And now, resolution two-two-zero-two-seven-nine.
This is amending a local share account grant application. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby amend, resolution two-two-zero-two-two-three, authorizing the filing of applications with the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program for the following: the Justice Volunteer Fire Company, one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-two-hundred dollars for building renovations, to correct the grant application, also to the Justice Fire Company, Volunteer Fire Company, for one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars for building renovations. Now, therefore, be it resolved this fourth day of October, 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 twenty-twenty-two, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby amend the requested grant amount for the application to the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program on behalf of the above-name entity and their respective project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is just updating the amount for the Justice Volunteer Fire Company from one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-two-hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-seven-sixty for their grant application.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second on the question, thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Brenda, thanks. Resolution two-two-zero-two-eight-zero.
Entering into a service agreement for the Trolley Museum, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a three-year HVAC service agreement with Siemens Industry, Industry Incorporated for the Lackawanna County Trolley Museum. Total cost of the three-year contract will be thirty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of the Trolley Museum, Mr. Wayne Hiller.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a renewal of an existing agreement with Siemens Industries, which expired August thirty-first. It's a three-year contract with the ability to terminate- It's a three-year contract with the ability to terminate the third year if the county engages into an agreement for upgrading multiple county facilities. Siemens is a computer automation system for the Trolley Museum. Siemens computers oversee the building and control systems, for example, the heating and cooling system, exhaust system, light controls during the work hours, and nightly security lighting. Siemens also controls our security monitoring system, which are the fire alarms and intrusion panels. Being that the county, being that the National Park Service owns the Trolley Museum building, they require us to have Siemens Industries in our facilities, since they also have Siemens overseeing their computers automation system. I already have this fee budgeted in the museum two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Any questions?
Nope.
Can entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution two-two-zero-two-eight-one.
Awaring the corrugated metal mural project. Be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the Penny Avenue corrugated metal mural installation project to artist Denton Burrows, Drippedown Productions LLC, thirty-five Avenue A, number four, New York, New York, one zero 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 nine, with an expense not to exceed eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to include design and labor. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Deputy Chief of Staff of Lackawanna County, Ms. Tracy Hart.
Hi. So Maureen McGuigan and I put out a call for art a couple months ago, and we received about four to six submissions. And while some of them were great, none of them really seemed to have the metal work that we needed. So almost approximately one month ago, I did a deep dive and was really looking for a street artist. And I found two artists, both out of New York City, that had excellent potential. So conducted a couple interviews, and we selected Denton Burrows, who's the gentleman that you're going to be voting on today. And he has extensive work with corrugated metal. Actually, the first interview that we did, he told me about how just the weekend before he was doing work on a pull-down corrugated metal sign in New York City, and, I mean, he's been doing this for years, and I have the utmost confidence in him. And his designs and vision far exceeded really anything that we thought and talked about. I gave him a couple ideas, and he came back within twenty-four hours with, I mean, everything far and away. And the background of it are, is blue and gold, which is the county colors. And the foreground is going to be black and shades of gray, and it's all of Lackawanna County's industrial history.
It's difficult to fix up the back of that building.
It's going to be really beautiful.
Well, the back of that building is, with all that metal, is difficult, and it was nobody, a local that knew how to?
Nobody that called us, submitted, Maureen reached out to?
Yeah.
I mean?
Of a local artist, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution two-two-zero-two-seven-three.
These are appointments to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Workforce Development Board. Dr. Carla Carlucci, Director of the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County, as a representative of an organization providing services to youth, term to commence October first, two thousand and twenty-two, and expire September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Be it further resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individual to the Workforce Development Board. Mrs. Maureen Brennan, Finance Manager of Crew Systems Corporation, sitting as a representative of the business and industry, term to commence July first, two thousand and twenty-two, and expire on July, June thirtieth, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-five. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions on this, Ms. Sacco is still here, Director Sacco is still here.
Are the dates right? You mentioned something about?
Yes, yes. I'm fixing the dates, actually, they're going along. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
All right, second. The question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, motions, two-two-zero-two-eight-four. Before I make this motion, I would like Ms. McGuigan come up and speak about this.
Mark's going to kill me if I screw this up. Okay. So the winter market started in two thousand and thirteen, and it's gone through many formats, so it's now in its ninth year. And last year, we, due to COVID, created a new model that was outdoors around the courthouse, but it really proved effective. We had a great turnout. I overheard someone on a cell phone say, this is like a mini Bryant Park. So the reason we do this and invest in this event is it's an art project and community project, but it's also an economic development project. Our creative entrepreneurs do very well, our small businesses downtown, people come out and shop, we're really trying to promote local. So we do need specialized and weatherized tents for safety and all the labor and expertise that comes with that. So this is our investment in these tents that will make the winter market happen.
It's great that we moved it, you've moved it.
Yes.
It doesn't interfere with traffic, it doesn't interfere with businesses.
And there's a cost savings, actually. So, yeah.
It was terrible where it was.
Yeah, that tent on Wyoming Avenue is very expensive, I know.
Yes.
Very expensive and very inconvenient for a lot of people.
Yes, we felt that, and we think the courthouse is beautiful.
Thank you very much, Mark. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Before we move on to the opportunity, we're going to take a short recess.
How do you feel? I'm going to get up. Be right back.
Okay. We'll call this meeting back to order.
Nothing. I do all of it.
Call the meeting back to order.
I don't know.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Mr. Peon. Oh, sorry.
May I approach?
The mic's yours.
May I approach?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on Penn Avenue. Dear Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners, please consider me a concerned citizen. My name is Abigail McKelskey, as pleased as it's stated. As I stood before you at the last Commissioners' Meeting, I provide you an unfinished draft of a possible course of action on community revitalization plan against the current drug and alcohol addiction, crime, prostitution, and homelessness crises present in Lackawanna County. Today I stand before you providing a finalized draft of the Breathing Hope Initiative, Lackawanna County, a detailed course of action, community intervention, and revitalization plan. Enclosed within the Breathing Hope Initiative, Lackawanna County's action plan are the current issues, resulting effects, desired outcomes, a detailed description of the proposed courses of action, the source of the current drug and alcohol addiction crisis, and the appropriate sustainability procedure, as well as a position for a new employment position under county leadership to aid the county leadership in the complete revitalization of Lackawanna County. For the homeless citizens of Lackawanna County, regaining financial standing is impossible. It has been nine months, and I've gotten further than most. I have almost lost my apartment on four different occasions, and may be homeless again on October thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two, due to the negligence of Lackawanna County and the insufficiency of the aid offered to me. In this time, as I have fought public humiliation, homelessness, and negligence through the aid and the services offered to me, financial depravity, and hunger, I have been so graced by God as to have met so many other beautifully scarred warriors. These warriors came with labels like criminal, forgotten veteran, former convict, homeless, addict, prostitute, mentally ill, transgender, and so many other ignorant and disgusting words. Their stories have left me restless and provoked me to tears, as I have listened to the horrendous details of neglect and abuse from the proposed services offered by Lackawanna County. I'd like you to also understand that the purpose of this explanation is not a cry for help, nor to plead my own case, but because the details of their stories that I carry with me are not my own to disclose. In January of two thousand and twenty, I married an abusive man who fought alcoholism. All throughout isolation, he terrorized me. When I fell ill, he chose marijuana and alcohol over my medicine, and I suffered a cervical misalignment and full nerve damage head to toe after he tore my shoulder out of place. Most of two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, I was rendered incapable to eat, sleep, or use the bathroom during the pandemic. In January of two thousand and twenty-two, Ryan McKelskey, my husband, attacked me, days after a procedure to clean out the remainder of the bacterial infection from my intestines. After I struck him back, he placed a PFA against me, had me forcibly evicted, and closed our bank account, leaving me with nothing, and yet cultivating the woman that is now speaking. You'd be surprised to know that I have no eloquent degree or title, and yet in my spare time, I study theology, genomic and molecular genetics, which is the study of interrelationships between organisms, psychology, business management, leadership, micro and macroeconomics. I pour endless hours into creating organizations, employment positions, corporations, and companies with the capabilities of becoming solutions to the issues that you, in this moment, have the capability to rectify. You would be astounded to find out that those that have been labeled and victimized are daughters, sons, mothers, fathers, future doctors, lawyers, scientists, engineers, inventors, and leaders without the hope of gaining financial standing or living beyond their current circumstances. They are tenacious, intelligent, and strong. These are the citizens you swore an oath to support, obey, and defend the constitutional rights of. Discharge the duties of your office with fidelity too, but they are my people. I have held the hands of men dying from drug overdoses that were denied services by Lackawanna County, held them as they cried, and received more care from them when I had nothing than I did the resources offered to me by Lackawanna County. We will become defined not by our past mistakes, failures, or shortcomings, but we become defined by our reactions and consistencies in both decisions and actions. We are who we choose to be, we become who and what we have decided that we are. We each have a past and have experienced and done things that we are not proud of, but it is what we choose to do at this point with our pasts, our knowledge and ability here and now, that will make us who we are and become how we allow others and ourselves to define us. Our response to injustice is a direct representation of who we are. The decisions of this current moment will shape who we become, how people define us, and how one day the story is told. We must begin to heal as a people from the trauma and frustration of the COVID-19 pandemic, city by city and county by county. As a nation, we have experienced and overcome tragedy before. Tragedy, especially mass spread, can either tear a people apart or unite and rekindle a nation. The attack on nine eleven was followed by community intervention, aid, and revitalization plans being released into the affected communities to begin to rebuild and restore from what we had left, each other. The decisions and courses of action chosen will become the deciding factor on what legacy we leave for our children. Thank you, Abigail McKelskey.
I, I really, I can't understand, our human services department is statewide recognized as one of the best in the, this isn't a conversation, that's fine. I'm just explaining to you, like, we are very proud of what Bill Browning and Jason Kavolich and everyone does. There seems to be help for anyone that seeks it out. You're saying that there isn't, and maybe we can talk with you about this.
I'd love for you to just read the details, and when you are done, if you'd like to discuss it, that is something that I'd be more than happy to do.
We'll be glad to talk with you about that, too.
But I can tell you that if it could have been done, it would have been me. And there are a lot of people that are hidden in the community that you don't know about because they don't register.
And I'm sure, I'm sure there are, but there are resources there that we work very hard to make sure that people have.
And not enough case management.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, anybody else? Chris?
Commissioner Terriani, Commissioner Schirmack, Chief of Staff Jeffers, Chris Peon, Blakely Borough Manager, thank you very much for having your meeting here today. On behalf of myself, Louis Perry, Joe Munley, Tom Westera, and Chief Salerno, we thank you very much. My reason for coming up here is many people in the Mid Valley's main concern is Main Street. It's in the state that it is, I'm sure you've driven on that road many times, and pretty much starting at West Lackawanna going right into Archibald, it's in rough shape. The section on Main Street where Krieger, UGI, just replaced their gas main, the road was paved curb to curb. As you can see, it didn't last. It's already starting to break down. The only reason the road was repaved is because of the relationship that Blakely Borough has with UGI, because Lackawanna County does not have a pave-cut ordinance that would require a utility that cuts your road to fix it curb to curb. Blakely Borough wrote a pave-cut ordinance, the four of us, Mr. Murley helped extensively on that as well. We would be willing to share that with you in order to help your roads have much more longevity than they currently do. That is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
It'd be great if you could email me that ordinance. I think Frank could jump on that in two seconds. Thank you.
To Mr. Peon's point, and a number of the municipalities in which I serve as well, we also have pave-cut ordinances, and they are useful and helpful.
And just a quick update on our money, we're waiting for the two-point-five million dollars from the federal government to pave Main Street, and once we get that, we'll start that.
Is that, and that says you've got a term, but you're not just a mill and overlay? Or are you, like I said, last year?
You'll have to talk to Larry about that. Did you talk to Larry yesterday?
I talked to Larry yesterday extensively.
What did he say?
Can you come back to the microphone?
Sorry, Mark.
That's right.
I talked to Larry extensively yesterday because I needed to talk to him about our sidewalk project on Main Street, and he was, he couldn't tell me if it was a complete base restoration job, or if it was just a mill and overlay. If it is a mill and overlay, going to be honest, it's not going to last. The base underneath Main Street is in rough shape.
Okay. And we'll look into that, and we put the Blakely wall out a bit.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, I've been working with Larry.
That's going to get worked on.
I've been working with Larry on that also.
Right.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chip Murley, appreciate the time to speak. Could you please update me on what you are doing with drop boxes?
We had a election board meeting, and we spoke about it then, and we're checking into the usefulness of them and the desire to have them at different places, and we'll talk about that again, and we'll get back to you on that.
Sure. Do you have a deadline?
There is actually a motion that I made to not have them, that's been tabled, so at our next election meeting, that will be revised.
I'm familiar with that motion, that's why I asked.
Yeah, that's, well, that's where it's at, so.
Okay.
In the meantime, we send the drop boxes out until the table comes back, because the governments that host them, we're calling for them.
If they want them, we are, we're sending them at this point.
You plan on putting surveillance on them?
They have surveillance.
They have surveillance. All the ones that have been sent have surveillance.
And the tape, the actual recording, what exactly are you doing with the recording? Is it going to be viewed every day?
It's not going to be reviewed every day.
Okay. Can I ask why?
No time to review it every day.
Could someone else review it?
No. No. Each municipality has their own rules upon their own surveillance, so we would get the burns if we need them, you know, the zip drives or the CDs, DVDs.
Again, this goes back to the same thing. If they don't have an application, they don't have a ballot, they can't vote, they aren't counted.
Right.
We, you know, we've gone through this repeatedly. Everyone speaks about how well our Bureau of Elections does, and it's just the same political rhetoric. It's absolutely, it's, it just doesn't, it's not logical to continue these conversations.
Well, part of that, too, is, I think we made a motion to preserve, once the election's over, to preserve these videos with our voting.
Yes, sir.
The rest of our...
Yes. And we've also upgraded the camera systems.
And then they're, you know, I guess someone could request them to watch them if they were on a tape.
That one's over, yes, sir.
Right. So they'll be available after the election is over.
Each of the municipalities will record their surveillance. To your question, we just don't have the wherewithal to sit there and review, because in theory, you'd have to review whatever, ten, twelve hours of video every day, depending on how long each municipality remains open on that particular day. But those are all preserved. And then afterwards, once the election is over, an individual can either go directly to the municipality under a right-to-know request and request the surveillance, or more so, if they're burned and we have them at the county, someone can request under the right-to-know law as well. So, I mean, that would be the vehicle and way in which to review them if someone wanted to after the fact, or if there was a...
Let's raise the question.
I think, why are we recording them if nobody in the county is ever gonna take a look at them?
Well, because they're there in the event an issue does arise.
And that, people have viewed them. Commissioner Schermack did view them.
Right, right.
Okay, when he requested to do it. It's not like it's not available.